Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to our August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two Board of Education meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Dwan Kraft will lead us in our invocation.
Thank you. So I'm reading from the Daily Coach, which our esteemed superintendent introduced me to a few months ago. It's called "The Hit Batter and the Shaken Pitcher." "The bad breaks we catch here and there are at the hands of someone else are very rarely personable, personal, and flying into a fit of rage over a mistake someone else may feel terrible about does little to help anyone. It's one of the scariest sights in sports, a baseball player being drilled in the head with a fastball. It frequently leads to teams shouting at each other and sometimes even a fight. But when a young player was hit in the helmet at the Little League Baseball World Series recently, what transpired next wasn't profanities or punches, but a hug and a couple of powerful words. 'You're doing just great,' the batter told the very distraught pitcher. It was a remarkable display of sportsmanship that garnered lots of attention in recent days, but it also has some key lessons. When we suffer a misfortune or get short-changed in some capacity, we often grow irate at the source. We blame a boss, a referee, the competition, or anyone else who has made our life more difficult. We may even view him or her as some sort of enemy in need of retribution. But the reality is that bad breaks we catch here and there at the hands of someone else are very rarely personal, and flying into a fit of rage over a mistake someone else may feel terrible about does little to help anyone. The hardest thing to do is often the right thing, and very rarely do we regret forgiving someone for a mistake in the long term. Empathy may not fix every challenge in front of us, but a little of it can go a long way toward making life easier, and the ability to exhibit it under duress can distinguish us from so many others. As we return to the office, the field, the classroom, and the weeks ahead, let's reflect and try to return to our own levels of innocence the way those two competitors did. Instead of getting mad, growing impatient, or ignoring someone struggling around us, we might want to try uttering our own version of 'you're doing just great.' The results could be surprising for the other person and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Our very own student board member, Sophia, is going to lead us in the pledge. If everyone would rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sophia. Public comment session. The public comment session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving unidentifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Please state your name and your address. We have Ms. Jennifer Woods. Jennifer, if you would come forward and state your name and your address, please.
Hi there, Jennifer Woods, two nine five eight Keratuck Highway in Keratuck. And I just wanted to congratulate Missy Swain, our CCHS agriculture teacher, who has been selected as a finalist for the North Carolina Center for Advancement of Teachings twenty twenty-two CTE Teacher of the Year Award. During the week of October third through the seventh, she will be participating in leadership sessions, multiple opportunities for discussion and sharing of best practices, and time for her interview. The announcement and celebration event will be held on October sixth, and we wish Missy the very best as she continues in the next round.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. We wish Missy the best. We hope that she can win. She deserves it. She's such a hard worker, and we just love her. Thank you for honoring her tonight. Next, we have Jeff Sedoma. Jeff Sedoma, please come forward. Please state your name and your mail-in address or your physical address, please.
Jeff Sedoma, one oh one Step Side Lane in Moyac, North Carolina, two seven nine five eight.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to say thanks to whoever put in the new minutes and agenda tool on the website for the school district. It's great. I love it. It's awesome. It's helped tremendously to find everything that I'm looking for and get information out to our community. I was wondering, I saw the new calendar, and I'm wondering if we could get the decoder for the different initials that are on the school calendar for this year. I think it's missing. I think it was there last year. I also had some quick comments on some of the policies. I went through those today that are going to be voted on tonight, I think. I can list them out if you want me to. On sixty-three oh five in the buses, the bus policy section, I'm wondering if we could, we would consider adding provisions for onboard or outside cameras on the buses? I don't know if we are planning on having those in Keratuck County or have them already. Might be something to think about for the future.
You said outside cameras?
Mm-hmm. Or inside on the bus for...
They exist.
Yeah, we do have those, Jeff.
I don't know if they have policies that govern dissemination or collection of information from those.
Okay, all right.
We do have policy.
Okay. Sorry, I missed it. One of the other ones in twenty-four ten for policy development, it's a little bit awkward wording. There's a statement in there, Section A, Paragraph Two, that talks about any Keratuck County Board of Education member or employee. I don't know if the employees are of the Board of Education or of the school district. You might want to put in employees of the school district in there. And then in twenty-one twenty-one, which is the... yeah, twenty-one twenty-one, sorry, the item number three, the conflict of interest thing, it talks about nonprofits. You may want to further define nonprofit entities or organizations. It's just, it's kind of hanging out there what type of nonprofit it is or who's deeming them nonprofits, if it's a state, state thing or a federal thing, I don't know. But otherwise, great work on that. Again, thanks for the calendar.
Thank you, Jeff. As always, we appreciate your input, appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight. It means a lot. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, but I would like to amend it first. And going down to number H, I'd like to change that to recognition of retired school board members and employee.
Okay. And you had mentioned that we were going to do these separate. Would you like to...
To be voted on separately.
...vote on them separately? Dr. Dobney's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do you want to tell us which employee you're planning to add?
I'll keep it a surprise.
Yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The agenda is approved. Ms. Kristi Hodges is here tonight. She's going to update us on the curriculum and instruction concerning letters training. And we heard earlier, we were in a work session earlier, and I'm really excited about this program that Kristi is introducing to all of us. I think good things will happen.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Lutz. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding letters training. In August two thousand twenty-one, letters training began in the state of North Carolina. Districts across the state were placed into one of three cohorts. Initially, Keratuck County Schools was slated to begin Cohort Two in January of this year. However, districts in Cohort Two were given the opportunity to defer their start time to August of this year, and we accepted this deferment. As you will see throughout the presentation, the decision to move to Cohort Three allowed us time to thoughtfully plan to ensure our teachers were supported during the implementation of letters training. So why are our teachers participating in letters training? In April two thousand twenty-one, Senate Bill three eighty-seven was passed mandating that pre-K through fifth-grade teachers receive training based on the science of reading. North Carolina Department of Public Instruction allocated twelve million dollars of federal funds for letters training. Letters, though it does appear to be misspelled, is an acronym that stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. This state mandated two-year training is required for all one hundred and fifteen districts across the state. Letters is not a program or a curriculum. Rather, it is considered product agnostic. Regardless of the curriculum used, teachers will be able to apply the instructional practices learned from this training. If our district were to adopt a new curriculum five or ten years down the road, teachers would continue to use the same instructional practices learned through this training. And the goal is simple. Teachers will be better, able to identify, address, and prevent reading difficulties in the classroom. The state was very explicit in what group of educators were required to be trained using state funding. K-five homeroom teachers, pre-K teachers, K-five EC resource teachers, K-five ELL teachers, K-five administrators, and elementary instructional coaches were identified as cohorts that must take letters training. You'll note the asterisk next to the K-five homeroom teachers. The state did allow districts to decide whether or not to include departmentalized elementary math teachers. We opted not to, knowing that if a teacher moved to ELA the following year, they would begin training at that time. We have a cohort of educators and support staff that were not included in the state funding letters training, but they do provide instructional support for many of our at-risk readers. We were able to fund an additional cohort using our Title I Professional Development Funds. Initially, we were only funding Title I teachers and Title I teacher assistants, but the cohort allows for forty slots, and because of this, we were able to add K-five MTSS teacher assistants, K-five EC teacher assistants, and our teacher assistant at Knott's Island Elementary School. As previously stated, one of the many benefits of shifting to Cohort Three was the planning that took place. The board's approval of the district's calendar in the spring to reflect both early release days as well as required workdays was monumental, and I thank you. Districts who were part of Cohorts One and Two did not have the opportunity to build a calendar to assist teachers in what is considered a college-level course. Therefore, many teachers in those districts were asked to stay after school or use Saturdays for their training. Furthermore, the additional time allowed us to thoughtfully build a pacing guide to ensure teachers were supported. In the spring of two thousand twenty-two, the literacy team and I traveled to all six elementary schools to share the pacing guide and offer clarity regarding letters. We used this time to collect questions and thus created an FAQ document that is housed on our district website. This was another benefit of shifting to Cohort Three. Teachers will be supported in school-level PLCs with coaches planning and facilitating those sessions. NCDPI created a resource document for instructional coaches to use during the professional learning community time. At convocation on Tuesday, August twenty-third, we will host the official letters kickoff session. And because letters will require approximately seventy-two hours to complete year one of the training, we will provide continuing education units for our teachers. In the spring, the literacy team and I met with letters to determine our training days. As you can see from the pacing guide that you received at the work session, there is an independent work teachers are expected to do, as well as face-to-face training. Early-release Fridays and required workdays will ensure we are providing teachers with time to be learners. I thank the board for your continued support as teachers begin their journey with letters training. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hodges, for being here tonight and bringing this up to date. Wonderful. I know I'm not supposed to call the program. The things that you described, I'm all for.
Thank you.
I have one question literacy-related.
Yes, ma'am.
M-class. I know last year we transitioned from doing running records on the iPad to paper. How did that go? And are we still going to continue with the paper this year?
We have, we have made some adjustments in our curriculum strategic plan. We did hear our teachers, and so we've made some adjustments in regards to certain grade levels. We are having less requirements for grade-three teachers because, at the district level, because they already are pretty overloaded with state expectations.
So third grade was adjusted?
Third grade was primarily adjusted. There are other adjustments. Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to add that Kristi presented this to us at our work session, and so we did have questions and went through some, some questions for her, and so this isn't the first time that we've heard it. But we appreciate you.
You're, you're welcome.
I had a quick question. I guess when it was presented, there's been data proven that the states or whoever participates in this, the test scores do go up?
Yes. So as I spoke in the work session, North Carolina is leaning on Mississippi. Mississippi has used this program that, you know, it's not a, it's, it's an agnostic product, but they, they have used this and have found great results with it. North Carolina just completed year one with Cohorts One and Two, and so we won't probably know results of that for quite some time. And then, of course, we're, we're beginning our, our process soon.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd also like to thank the board for approving a calendar that is going to support our elementary teachers along with our high school teachers. I know that the half-day can be an inconvenience for our families. I do recognize that. But given the magnitude of what we are expected to accomplish, we were wanting to do this well and make this worth all of our educators' time. So thank you in advance.
Yes, and many of our teach, schools across the state are making their staff do it on Saturdays and nights and that kind of thing. So I'm grateful that we're able to give them that.
Me too. Thanks again, Ms. Hodges.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Renee Dowdy, our Assistant Superintendent, along with Mr. Jimmy Calvert, our Transportation Director, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Etheridge, members of the board, and Dr. Lutz. In about eleven days, our community will be abuzz with the official start of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. While this summer was the longest officially on paper, because we got out of school memorial before Memorial Day and don't start officially until the twenty-ninth, there has been so much going on with the growth in our school enrollment numbers, capital projects, especially at our Northern End Schools, and the hiring of new staff that it barely feels like summer was here. But nonetheless, we're excited with anticipation for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Ms. Reynolds and our data manager shared with Dr. Lutz and myself today that we have enrolled five hundred and eighty-two new students to our district over the summer. Of course, this number includes our newest kindergarten students, which happens every year, but even still, this summer enrollment has exceeded any previous summer enrollment periods that we are aware of. And as with any growth period, change happens. This evening, Mr. Jimmy Calvert, Transportation Director, and myself wanted to take a few minutes to remind our community that those yellow buses from Keratuck County Schools will be out in full force very soon. We had a wonderfully smooth start to the JP NAP school year and hope for the same as we welcome back all of our students on August twenty-ninth. A couple of things that we wanted to highlight this evening include: Keratuck County Schools will have forty yellow buses in operation for the start of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Currently, our Transportation Department is fully staffed with bus drivers...
Woo!
...and is currently still seeking three bus monitors. So if anyone listening in our community is interested, please give our Transportation Office a call. Three thousand and forty-two of our students have registered for transportation services for the new school year. This number is up from two thousand eight hundred and twenty over the past year. School start and end times have been changed for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. These changes have led to shorter route times for most, all of our students using school transportation. It has also allowed us to decrease the number of students assigned to each bus because we can now share buses after morning and afternoon routes. We anticipate this having a positive impact on student bus behavior. Parents can access the start and end times for each of our schools on our district website under the Parents tab, as well as in the scrolling headlines. Our district school administration have also been sharing out this information with their families during their welcome-back messages to students and parents. District staff and our Transportation Office will monitor the implementation of our new school schedule and stand ready to make any adjustments as needed to ensure that our students are taken care of. Traffic flows around Keratuck County High School and Keratuck County Middle School will now be modified to ease the congestion between school buses, parent pickups and drop-offs, and student drivers. Mr. Calvert, school administrators, Department of Transportation, as well as local law enforcement have been in communication about changes. We expect information to go out to our families, parents, students, and the community beginning next week. This information will also be shared at open houses and via our social media outlets. Maps like the one you see here will be going out and posted to all of our social media outlets, drawing a map for parents to understand where to access these new routes and locations, as well as our new student drivers to the high school. Finally, school bus safety is paramount. We ask our community to obey school bus stop arms and lights as buses stop throughout our community to pick up our most precious cargo. Nothing is too important to race around a school bus. Be patient and know that it is all of our responsibility to look out for our children. More on school bus safety will be posted this week and next week to our social media outlets and website. Our Transportation Office will be mailing individual letters at the end of this week to all of our families. These letters will include bus route info for those who have registered for transportation, as well as information from our Tech Department and School Nutrition Department, and even a very special welcome back letter from our Superintendent, Dr. Lutz. A big shout-out to Mr. Calvert, his team, and all of our bus drivers for helping us to make sure our children get to and from school safely each and every year.
Thank you, Renee.
Sounds great. Y'all have been busy. Fully staffed, because I know we struggled with that in the past. So that's a wonderful thing. Shorter bus routes is a good thing. The capacity on the buses, less is, is a good thing. Everything, everything that you described is, is great for our kids.
Mr. Calvert, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions since, so all of our middle school kids from Knott's Island will be going on the ferry.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just had a couple of questions as a parent and from other parents who are asking. I know back many years ago when I was going, we were able, parents were able to drop off and pick up their kids at the ferry on the Knott's Island side. Is that still something that happens?
It can happen, but I prefer that a note go to the school, just for safety reasons.
Right. Well, and it's just, you know, sometimes parents have stuff to do. It's just easy to pick them up over there and then just go from there instead of waiting for them to get home. And my other question, so if anyone asks, they want, not the first day, but once we get going and the schedules are more in place, they could possibly send a note to the school?
Correct.
And ask that? Okay.
And I would caution us here on that, the pickups kind of an easy part, right? Like, because that's, we have lots of families that pick up, but when you put your student from, you drive them to the ferry docks, they still have to get on a bus sometime after that ferry ride over to get to school.
Right.
So transportation needs to know about that. If that's one of the considerations, because I think you said drop them off and pick them up.
Well, I meant drop them off at, on the ferry in the morning to go to school, and then they'll drive the bus, of course, over here. And then, when they get home in the evening, pick them up on the Knott's Island side. It's all on the Knott's.
Right. So pickups, I think, is super easy. It's just the drop-off at the ferry. They still, when they get to Keratuck, they have to get on a bus to get to the school. And that's something we have to count for. So just make sure that's something that happens, that we have a record of that.
Right.
That, that could occur, you know, if the child misses the bus on the island, the parent can run them to the ferry dock and still get them to school.
And we have one high school student that does that quite often.
Okay.
He misses the bus.
And then it does, and then it does happen. I mean, it's much easier to run them down to the ferry five minutes away than to drive them, you know, over, around. And I think, and then I think we touched on this last time, but in reference to, because we will have sixth grade to twelfth grade, and it's going to be a huge, it's going to be a lot more students on the ferry this time now. Are we going to separate middle school from high school?
Correct. Middle school's going to be on one side, and high school's going to be on the other, along with NAP, along with a monitor on both sides and a driver.
Right.
I did have a phone call from a parent at Knott's Island who was concerned about the length of the day with the change in the ferry schedule and what have you, but I believe it ends up being how much longer of a day? What's it?
For the Knott's Island.
For the Knott's Island.
Well, the plus side of that is also that middle school and high school bus, originally the high school bus was doing the whole island.
Right.
But we're splitting it, so it's really not too much of a gain, because one is going to go over there and do Northern End by the other one's doing by the ferry. So I wouldn't really say too much longer for ride time compared to what it was.
Well, I think they were talking about the ferry time, like if they left Knott's Island at seven fifteen in the morning and got home at four fifteen versus what time the ferry's leaving now versus what time it's getting back. But, you know, I guess with everything we do, we'll, when it's new, we implement it. If there's a problem, you know, we'll try and tweak it to make it better. So we, we do appreciate folks.
But we don't have, I think I'm right on this. I think I heard you say that last time. This really impacts our elementary students, that we don't have any elementary students that have hour-long rides now.
Two hours they used to have.
Two hours, yeah.
Of course, you know, you have your crawls.
Right.
You can go to Gibbs Woods.
Right.
But the other ones, no. And even I worked with Central Pre-K, they had a real long ride.
Yes.
And I came up with a plan where they're pretty much forty-five minutes.
Okay. What about Gibbs Woods? Are they an hour, hour?
It was about an hour, hour and fifteen minutes.
Okay.
That's still better than two hours.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then what about with NAP? I know that we've, we've discussed before, NAP is, because they are on a schedule more with COA, correct? So they get out earlier. So, but this is, this isn't something new. They've always been on a different schedule than the high school. So we've always had an overlap between the two high schools, one way or another, correct? Whether one was waiting on the other, they, one, one school has to wait on the other, or depending on where you live, basically, it's probably the Knott's Island kids.
That's correct.
They have, they're going to have to wait for the high school to get out. And I guess that's, that's probably a longer, is that a longer time this, now, than it was?
So in years past, it was the reverse. So you're right. Basically, somebody's always waiting on somebody else when you're riding the ferry, because one school's getting out different than the other. So in years past, it used to be the opposite. Now was waiting, the high school was waiting on NAP students to get over there, and now it's reversed. And now NAP, Knott's Island students are waiting on the high school to get out to catch the ferry ride over. And we've had discussions about that, and we've even had discussions with school administrators about what does that look like? What can we offer? What types of, you know, things can we do for those students that may have to wait a little bit longer? And it's a nominal number. It's not a ton that we're talking about, but we feel like we can have a plan to address that. But you're right. Inevitably, somebody has to wait on somebody else to get there.
I believe it's five.
It's five.
Right, Dr. Lutz. It's five of the JP NAP kids. So for any of the parents who are concerned, perhaps once we get into the school year with those schools and this new schedule, we, like we said, there's always going to be something modified. So, right, and maybe something can be looked into to address that, so that it's just, I mean, when you think of five, it doesn't seem like, but, you know, to the... I mean, when you think of five, it doesn't seem like, but, you know, to those five kids, it's, it's, it's a long time.
I, I did also have a concern about, or I had someone call me about a concern with our athletes, but I believe, uh, Dr. Durham and, and Mr. Parker have worked and they've moved power school to the end of the day.
Power time, yes.
Okay. Power time, I mean, I'm sorry, I've got the data collection on the brain this evening. So that's, that's a plus.
Means they won't be missing class time though.
Or period time, that's right. That's an additional intervention time or enrichment time, so that's what will, you know, be at the end of the day now to help alleviate some of what may happen with game time still being earlier in the day and our later dismissal time.
And did you say we had five hundred and eighty-two new students registered this summer?
Yes, ma'am.
That is like another school.
Yes, ma'am. Now, that does not count any withdrawals, obviously we always know that around the Labor Day timeframe, they shift and change because we have students that start in Virginia, they'll start till later than us, so we typically lose some of those withdrawals, but we've never seen numbers like that in a summer enrollment.
That's what I was going to ask you, have we ever, even back in 2003 with the...
The housing boom, now I, I don't know about that far back, um, but nothing like this in any of the years past. And I would venture that it's never been that high period.
No, I don't think it has.
So we obviously need to reschedule that commissioner meeting.
Yes.
And start looking for more land for another school.
It's coming.
And we need to go on and get ground broken for that new one in Moayak?
Hard hats and shovels.
Progress is on its, we're making progress.
Oh, my, I have never heard of that.
I haven't either. Almost six hundred kids.
And I, I know that, um, you know, we've got, I think it's seven hundred and fifty-six new units that have been approved for Moayak with FOST and Flora. So we, we definitely need to get that on our schedule.
And we just need to keep moving forward because it's, it's coming, so we need to plan accordingly.
That's our next update.
So it sounds like a great segue into your very next.
That's right.
I have a question for Jimmy.
Okay, all right. Dr. Dobney?
Uh, didn't at one time we had fifty-five or fifty-seven buses?
One time, I think it was up to sixty-five near Mary Cox's time, that's when I first started, twenty-some years ago.
And we're down to forty now.
Yes.
So there should be some savings in maintenance and that, even though they're doing double runs?
Yes, definitely. I was talking to Gregory Poole today, and he was saying that every district he's went to, they're twenty percent shorter drivers, so we're very, very fortunate.
We're very...
Really?
Yeah, very blessed.
Well, we certainly appreciate our drivers, and we appreciate you and all that you do.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Lutes?
Absolutely, and to follow up, that just today, Jimmy, Mr. Calvert had all of the bus drivers together, met with our system principals, went over process procedures, expectations, we all made sure that we stopped in and thanked them as well, and they're also going to go out and ride the routes, uh, before school so that we know where we're at and so on. Again, it's just the, the whole idea of, of streamlining our processes and procedures to make, um, school a great experience for our kids and our families.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Lutes, that just reminded me, the, the app, the EDU, is it EDU log?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes. Is that for all of our schools?
Yes.
Okay, because, uh, actually Knott's Island wasn't coming up, because a parent was, I, because I pulled it, I have it up for Moayak, but when the parent tried to do it and I was helping her through it, Knott's Island's not coming up. So I didn't know if it's just something that's being pushed out?
I wonder if they have signed up for the bus? If they can contact me tomorrow, I can check, because it communicates back and forth with our software over there.
Okay. So when he means that the parent didn't say they needed transportation, it won't show up for them?
Oh, okay.
Right, which makes sense, but I'm pretty sure they did because the child's always rode the bus, but, um, I will make sure of that, but I will, um, and tell, tell her to call. Should, should she do it now or just wait a few more?
She can do it now, it's fine, because I can go into the software and see.
So it, but Knott's Island should be on there?
Right.
Okay, and it's all for, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
There'll be information on how to work through the app and sign up in the mailing as well.
Okay. Are you also mailing that, uh, the map? Is that going home?
So it's not, that's only for our high school and middle schools, so they're going to take care of that directly at those two schools, it won't go out in the mass mailing to everybody else.
Okay.
So it's just changing the traffic pattern.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Our sheriff's department is equally excited.
That's right. All right. Dr. Lutes?
Okay. Um, all right. Okay, this, uh, every, every board meeting, we have an update on where we're at with our school growth and facility needs, and we'll start with, uh, Moayak Middle School and a few pictures. We are making great progress. The pads are being poured off of the wings at each of the middle schools, they are in place. We also have added concrete off of the cafeteria. Um, the work crews are diligently going through the process, and we will, it appears that we will definitely make the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, ready to go at, at the middle school and the elementary school. Um, interior, the picture on the left is the, what will be the band room, and behind that will be chorus, uh, a more, and they are making such progress, it's unbelievable. Just every few days, I'm dropping in, that room is now painted, the ceiling tiles are in, and the floor was being put in yesterday. That's going to be a very, very nice facility for our, our students at Moayak Middle School. Um, we may have a slight delay on getting our kids into the room, as with so many other delays caused by COVID, the fire doors are late coming in, and once those are installed, uh, we'll move forward. Moayak Elementary, if you get a chance, you want to drive by there. Uh, the steel girders are in place for the expanded cafeteria for the seating area, the walls are going up for the, the new building. In addition, in the back, our modular unit is fully arrived, and Matt Mullins has done an outstanding job of coordinating multiple groups of people to make sure these trailers are going to be ready, uh, as close as we can to the first day of school, um, on site. He had four different contracting groups on site today, um, putting things in, and that's quite, quite the coordination to get things done. They arrived just a couple of weeks ago. We have not missed a beat as far as when we were approved by our county commissioners to move forward in October. We have stayed up to date on everything, everything has moved as quickly as it can. COVID delays are what they are, but we think we're going to be able to meet our deadlines, and a septic system is being installed. That's how much work is going in, in a very quick amount of time. All right. These are pictures of Moayak Elementary School. The right, the one on the right is the new building, the one on the left, you can see the girders for where the cafeteria will be expanded and connected with the school. Just continuing, ongoing process. We are so pleased, um, with Sussex, the, the crew that is completing the work, um, they are professional, they are polite, they are clean, um, and they are continually working, just a very, very positive experience, and it's a pleasure working with the county in Sussex throughout this project. To that end, let me go to the next one. To that end, we have a meeting tomorrow, um, county and myself and Matt Mullins as well, um, to continue discussions around the Talls Creek property and where we are at in terms of design, and I should have a further update regarding breaking ground and where that, where we are in that process at our next meeting.
Okay, any questions?
To that end, one more thing, and follow up on Mrs. Rose, yes, we do need to continue our discussion with our board of commissioners to make sure that we stay on top of our school growth and facility needs. It's nice that we do have a solid plan in place with the expansions, the new elementary school, but without a doubt, we're going to need more space in the next few years.
Have we been able to reschedule that meeting? No?
We have not been able to all land on a date yet, but we are working on it.
Okay.
Well, I'd, I'd like to say thank you to the faculty and staff at both of those schools, because two years under construction is not easy to carry on, and, and to the students for doing well with it, and parents and pickups and everybody involved, I know it's not easy.
And our nutrition department at Moayak Middle is going to still be serving all the kids at Moayak Elementary.
Yes, out of a cafeteria that's under construction.
In the midst of all, they're...
They're under construction, the wall has been taken down at Moayak Middle School to expand the, the cafeteria outward. Um, and speaking of Moayak Elementary, the traffic pattern, there is a new traffic pattern there as well, Ms. Kelly will make sure that she, um, sends that out to her families. Uh, again, the Moayak families have been amazing and amazingly patient throughout this process, and she and her team have done a wonderful job of keeping things as smooth.
New parking lot.
New parking lot, new traffic pattern.
Yeah.
Six new classrooms in the back of the building, we are putting walkways into the school, and we're continuing to make, make this as smooth a process as we can.
And as we mentioned earlier, to do those new, uh, nutrition, the forms for...
Yes.
Free and reduced lunch.
Free and reduced lunch, because that is important, and it is online now, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Please fill out the, the forms, yes.
Last year, everybody was able to get free lunch, correct?
Correct, so I will not mention, I had that in my closing, but I'll mention it now.
But that's not happening, Mrs.
Which is, there, this year, there will not be, there will not be free lunch for all this year.
No free lunch.
Or free breakfast. No free lunch. I think someone wrote a book on that.
That's right. All right, thank you, Dr. Lutes. We're doing some really good things, I'm excited about the construction and, and everything that's going on. Um, at this time, I would like to make a, I would like to nominate, make a motion that Janet Rose be one of our North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors. Like to make that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second.
I'm going to recuse myself from that.
Okay, all right, and I would like to ask if there's any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, Janet?
Thank you very much, and I, you know, of course, it still has a long way to go before it happens, but I do appreciate it.
Yes. Well, I, I think you would be really an asset to our North Carolina School Board.
I agree.
Board of Directors, and I hope you are able to have the position and represent little old Currituck County.
Thank you. We're not little.
No, not little anymore.
By those numbers, we're not, we're not staying little.
That's the truth. I know, almost six hundred, that's unbelievable. Um, Dr. Dobney, you would like to recognize a few people tonight?
That's correct. As you know, we have schools, parts of schools, fields and that named after people, yet there are some people that have done great service to the county and have received no recognition. Uh, therefore, I propose that we commemorate two former Board of Education members and a former employee for their service to the Currituck County Schools, and that they get the recognition that they deserve. First, John Barnes. John was a school board member for thirty-seven years, and you talk about construction projects, he went through many, many, many construction projects, and that was one of his areas of expertise. Next, Mary Ellen Maxwell. She was on the board for twenty-four years, and she served as president of the National School Boards Association, so that gave Currituck some nationwide recognition. Uh, next, an employee, Jeannie Meggs. Jeannie was, uh, superintendent for twelve years, that was back, I think she became superintendent in nineteen seventy-seven, and at that time, she was the first female superintendent I think North Carolina had had in a hundred years. She was very good friends with Mark Bassnight, and they were able to do a lot of good for Currituck County, and I'd like to put that in form of a motion and make three separate votes out of it.
Okay. All right, we have, uh, three individuals that have, would like to be recognized from Dr. Dobney, and we're going to vote on those separately. First, we have Mr. John Barnes. All in favor?
I'm going to recuse myself from that.
Okay, Ms. Peters?
And I'm, I'm, I'm going to do the same, since he is my uncle.
Okay. We have two, uh, board members that are related to Mr. Barnes, and they are going to recuse themselves from the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any discussion? Motion carries for Mr. John Barnes. Next, we have Ms. Mary Ellen Maxwell. Do I have a motion?
A motion that we, um, honor Mary Ellen.
I second that.
We have a first, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Mary Ellen Maxwell will be honored. Next, we have Ms. Jeannie Meggs.
I'd like to make a motion that we honor Jeannie Meggs.
And I'll second it.
We have a first and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor for Jeannie Meggs?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Ms. Jeannie Meggs will be recognized.
And the way that, that I propose that we honor her is to plant a tree for each one, and also have a plaque at the bottom explaining, you know, their service to the county, and that we find or develop a nice place at the, uh, White House, the administration building. And we have a nice walkway out there, and I don't know if we have somebody that would know how to design something like that, or, but I'd like to make it really nice, because these people really, you know, deserve the recognition, and then once we get that, if we could plan a ceremony, you know, for those people.
So all three trees would be at the White House?
Yes.
And you know, that I find very fitting, especially for Jeannie Meggs, because she was superintendent when one of the large trees at NAP had to be cut down. And I can remember how she was so upset about it, you know, because the tree was very old, but it, it, it had, it really had to be cut down, so she, I'm sure that's a nice way to honor Jeannie with planting a tree.
I think so, too.
She heard me. And me.
And me.
I think it would be nice if we could incorporate it, and maybe Mr. Mullins could help us and some others. I've always pictured kind of like a Serenity Garden, or a small little area with the trees and a bench, where if you wanted to take a break and go outside and, and just have a few minutes to yourself, it would be a nice little courtyard area, something like that, so maybe we could...
Does that mean you want to design it?
I would love, I would love to design it.
So are we gonna, is this, are we gonna do the same for all, or?
Three trees?
Yeah, the three, we could do, the three trees, maybe...
Yeah, we'll be all in one place.
All in one place, yeah.
And maybe check with the family members, if they had a type of tree that, that meant a lot to them, and if it's something that we could plant in this part of, of North Carolina that would thrive, we could check with them and see, and, um, I think it's a wonderful idea, Dr. Dobney, I thank you for honoring those, uh, individuals.
Yeah, well, I knew all three of them for years and years and years, and they all deserve the recognition.
Yes, they do.
And the front of the White House is kind of there, that would be a great location, and, and maybe we should even check into Live Oaks, because Live Oaks are strong and sturdy.
Yes.
And all three of these individuals...
Are strong and sturdy.
Were strong and sturdy.
That's right.
Now, at the, I think our June meeting, we had a request letter come in to discuss about perhaps naming the community gym on Knott's Island, putting Mr. Barnes's name on that. Is that something we would decide now, or is that something...
Think they're going to do that at the Knott's Island meeting?
So, that's not, okay, so that would be part of it. That's why I was asking. I just didn't know if that was going to be carried through.
Yeah, I think Mr. Goines was taking his boys to, it was move-in day. And so, I think he was hoping that we could do it.
Okay.
Right, okay. That's why I was asking. I didn't know if that was something that was still being looked into. And as the family, as we discussed, if you walk through most of these newer buildings or even some of the older ones, yeah, John Barnes's name is on a pretty, I think we counted them that day of the tour. Was it, I think it was six or seven.
Well, I believe he ran unopposed, all of his, um-
He did.
Yeah.
But he was very, he was very proud of Currituck and, you know, had seen his kids and grandkids and family go through Currituck, so.
And he always made any kind of decisions for the kids, you know, his heart. All three, all three of these individuals, they just loved Currituck. They loved the kids of the, of the community. So, they didn't have any ulterior motives with their good works.
And that is something that John told me when I was first elected to the board. If you will just do one thing, you'll be all right. And I said, what is that? Just ask yourself, what's best for the kids with every decision you make?
You can't go wrong if you do that.
And I do think he did that.
He did, he did.
I agree.
All right, well, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Are we going to consider this gentleman's changes to the policies?
We are going to have to probably remove those and, and check on, on those changes. Dr. Lutes, is that correct? To see what's, you know, I know all of the policies that he's referring to. What do you think?
Well, 6305 was okay.
Yeah, I, so, I, I think he was just raising a few different concerns. We'll take a look at them and see what they are. I think it's fine to leave them currently on the, we can revisit them if needed.
Okay.
But I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay. All right.
So, we'll look at them and then if you see that there needs to be some, yeah.
We'll sit down with them and take a look, review the policies.
Because there were some that we pulled out anyway that we have to discuss in September.
Right, okay. All right, we have a first and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Our next meeting is going to be September 14th at 5:00 o'clock. We're going to have a work session, and we're going over to Notz Island that day. If you can join us, we'd love to have you. We're going to start our work session at 5:00 o'clock. And then, we're going to have our general board meeting at 6:00 o'clock that evening. We'd love to see you there. Board member comments and our superintendent, Dr. Dobny, I'd like to start with you, please.
You know, I'd just like to thank all our school employees, you know, that worked so hard this summer so that we can have a smooth opening to this coming school year. And there's been a lot of changes. People have worked very hard, and I just want them to know that I appreciate it.
Right, thank you. Ms. Craft?
Yes, I wanted to say congratulations to Missy Swain. And I'm certainly hoping that we get that honor for her. I went to the new teacher training on Monday. That was very nice, a room full of people. It was, it was nice to see that we had most of our openings filled. And I want to also thank all of our teachers and staff for all their hard work to get our school year started. I pray for you all as we welcome our students, and I wish you good luck. And thank you, Dr. Dobny, for thinking of this honor for our retired school board members and our employee.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. Ms. Peters?
Again, this, as Ms. Doughty noted, this has been the longest summer on paper. But it seems like it's, it does seem like it's been so busy. Just, I mean, with all, everyone busy at the schools, with the building, the, the moving forward, the changes, our growth. I mean, everyone is super busy. So, thank you to all of our 12-month employees because they are just working really hard all summer to make all these changes. And, you know, so many, my daughter's going into middle school now, so I'm really seeing, you know, all these coaches who spend a lot of time during the summer with all these camps. I mean, that's really, you know, a great thing for our kids, and thank you to them. And to our community, I attended the Currituck Kids thing they had at the YMCA. And that was, that was really nice of them for what they did for our kids. I think we're very blessed at all the different organizations that give back. And even in our local, smaller communities, like the Ruritans, the churches. It's, and part of our strategic, you know, plan, our community is really, it seems like they're, they're really stepping up this year. And I just wanted to thank them. And I wish everyone a safe and happy and healthy start to our new year. And, you know, please be involved and get out there and, and support our, our teachers and staff. And most of all, your kids, your students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Ms. Rose?
So, I had one thing I meant to ask, and I didn't, so I'm going to ask Dr. Lutes. Accreditation, we started that process sometime back?
We did. We're, we have yet to hear back from the state. However, we are prepared, if they, if the state cannot make a decision on what they're going to do with accreditation, we're prepared to move forward with a private company.
And when will we do that? When will we move forward with another company?
By the end of September.
End of September, okay. And the extra, the ferry, that, I'd like to see an extra ferry trip like we used to have long ago for the Notz Island children that are participating in clubs and athletics. So, you know, I spoke with Mr. Hannig, and he said, get him some numbers. And so, if we can work on getting numbers of students that participate from Notz Island, then maybe he can help us with that. And we've talked before, every year, it comes up, "Too late, graduation walk." And so, I know we talked about it last year. We talked about NAP being involved and the high school being involved. I don't know if they can do it the same day because they probably get their caps and gowns at different times. But I hope we can put that on the agenda for this year. And prom, I'm already getting questions about prom being off-site.
Oh, my gosh.
So, it's never too early to start planning. I hope we can do that. And I would like to congratulate Ms. Swain. Both my children had her for a teacher. I know she puts in a lot of hours and works hard, and I hope she does very well. I'm sure she will with the interview process. And hats off to Currituck Kids for all that they, they do for our children. And the other groups that have collected school supplies.
All the churches, the local churches.
Yes. And a big thank you to maintenance and their administrators and all 12-month employees who've worked so hard to get our schools ready for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Dr. Lutes?
All right. Several thank yous. Thank you to the state for granting raises across the board at least a 4% for most of our, for our, for all of our employees, we're taking care of things. And so, we're going to make sure that whether you're paid out of state, local, or federal funds. And we appreciate the state recognizing our, our educators. Want to, again, a reminder on our CTE diploma track, we continue to have those conversations. And we really like that concept, and we really hope that, that our state legislature will pick it up. I know I spoke with Representative Hannig recently, and he, again, reiterated his support for that program. Kindergarten roundup was yesterday, finally, and we had an outstanding turnout. Almost 80% or more of our students came at every building. It gave us a chance to walk through our kindergarten and start to place our students. So, that was a, a great day. Our human resources department with Ann Mackin and Ms. Angela Lasher have been working diligently all summer, filling well, probably approximately 75 positions throughout the summer, and we continue to grow. I think I already reminded everyone that meals are not free, lunch is not free this year. Want to also thank our summer bridge program, our summer reading program, all the teachers that participated in that, working with our students. We had approximately, almost 100 students at one, one time or another. And on another note, our hunter, our dog, has been retired.
Oh, okay.
So, he is alive and well, but he has been retired from service.
Fired. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Dr. Lutes. In closing, I follow a Facebook blogger, and it's called Finding Joy. And this one hit home for me just because the summer is coming to a close. And I think about how we're always rushed to, to get everything done. And, you know, we're always behind, and we always have more things we need to do. I thought about my daughter Diane. This summer, she got a lot of teachers together, a lot of friends together. And she made a calendar for the summer, beach days. Whoever can make it, the more the merrier. Come on, take the time to enjoy this beautiful place we call home. So, I was reading the blog on this site, and I just wanted to share it with you if I could. And it really comes down to this, life is about our people, not what kind of countertops you have or how long it's been since you've mowed your grass, or how many likes you got on your vacation picture, or what position your kid plays on the travel team, or how good or bad your new dinner recipe turned out, or the brand of car you get to say you drive. It's about the person whose heartfelt scene as she sat across the countertop from you sharing her struggles over coffee. And the conversation you have with that neighbor as you're putting your lawnmower away. The long overdue life-heart-to-heart chat you had with your spouse on the balcony during that trip you went on. And the kid you get to hug on the way to the car after the game. And the family with whom you shared that meal, and everyone laughed when they realized it was safe to say mom didn't ace her cooking tonight. And the friend to whom you gave a ride to the car shop who impacted more by the gesture than the logo on the front of the hood. Life, it's about people. And I'm guilty as anyone of forgetting it sometimes. But then, I have those invaluable moments with the ones who matter most. And suddenly, the stuff seems so trivial. And I remember that it's worth fighting past all of it, to live life where it's meant to be lived, with the people who make it fuller by being in it. Thank you. With that being said, do I have a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here tonight.